Do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome all to the Tuesday, May 14th, 2024 Lincoln County Commission Meeting. Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I would like to pull item number four from the regular business. Mr. Timmerman is not present today. And so, that being said, I would like to entertain a motion.
I would offer a motion with that change.
Second.
Motion by Poppins, second by Aaron's.
I would like to go into executive session before item number six and seven on the regular business agenda, if possible.
We can recognize that.
Okay. And also add to that executive session prior to items number six and seven.
I'll make that change in my motion.
That's part of my second.
Okay. Again, with the motion by Poppins, second by Aaron's. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes. That being said, do I also now have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Mr. Chair.
A second.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Poppins. Is there any public input on the act? If not, no further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes. Motion carried. Moving on to our regular business, item number one, Terry Floyd.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have Brad Dietzmann here from Vandywall Architect. We're going to talk about the bid opening for the shop office additions that we had last week. So Brad wants to come up here. We had three bidders on this project, and like I said, I'll let Brad run through this stuff.
Good morning. We had three bidders on the job, Huguen Dorn Construction, Sun Cota Construction, and Beckenhofer Construction. Did you guys get the bid tab passed on? Did you get the bid tab passed on? Do I need to go over that?
It should be there.
There we go.
Yep.
So you can see based off the bid tab, there's about a $9900 spread is all between the highest and lowest bid, which represents a very competitive bidding process. I will state that each general contractor all used the same mechanical HVAC plumbing and electrical contractor in their bids, which probably represents why the bid is so tight. From my understanding, they got multiple bids from some of these subcontractors, but they all used the same plumbing HVAC and electrical subcontractor to get a tight bid like that. The bid also has a 10% contingency including in it, and the bid alternate was for the additional office space off the back as an alternate bid. So you can see those numbers in there. When we first started the project back in January of this year, we talked about what potential budget costs would be. At that time, it was roughly $450,000 without doing any design work. We started the design work working with Terry and John. Before the project went out for bid, a week before it went out for bid, we ran numbers, had it preliminarily priced with 80% construction documents to verify cost might be in line or if we need to readjust things. At that point in time, the bid came in at $516,450. That number was shared with John and Terry. I did a cost analysis based off previous projects that we have done that are either under construction or have been completed in the last few months, one of them being an office expansion in Sioux Falls, a contractor's office shop, new construction, Muth Electric's new office shop in Sioux Falls, and they came in at an average of $234,000 or $234 per square foot. If I cross-reference that cost, real cost, to what the estimate was back in April, April was 232. Our data shows 234 is currently what things are being built for. Now, keep in mind, those projects that are under construction now are just finishing up. Bidding and contracts were awarded 12 months to six months ago. So when the bids did come in at this rate, it shows a representative cost of 394 a square foot, which is out of line with what we have been seeing for projects under construction and finishing up. After we got the bids, I reached out to the design team, and an apparent little bidder, Huguen Dorn, asked them to come up a list of VE items by talking, reviewing the design, talking to their subs. They came up with several items, one of them being revising the HVAC system to a more basic system, which could save potentially $76,000. Remove the second bathroom that we showed in the office, keeping the single bathrooms that is there, which is a reduction of roughly $28,000. We confirmed Davis Bacon wages were not required. That saves $4,000. We also looked at shifting the building a foot forward. Currently, the new addition, footing and foundation is over the existing sewer line that comes out of the building, which means we'd have to cut up concrete inside the building and reroute the sewer line. If we can avoid putting footings and foundations over the existing sewer line, that would save us roughly $6,000. We looked at some of the concrete patch repair work around the outside of the building that could save us $16,500. So a total of roughly $146,000 in VE items, which is a 16% reduction. By doing the VE items and removing the contingency amount, we would be down to 73241 approximately. The other items that we could still price is not put dimmable lights in the office, which removes some controls, probably minimal cost, and look at a different roofing system versus a fully adhere EPDM roofing, look at mechanically fastened EPDM or a TPO roofing situation. Those numbers I don't have currently. I will mention, too, about a week before we had the bid letting on this project, we got a, we had a bid letting on another office addition remodel locally here, and that number came in at $305 a square foot.
Are you open for questions from the commission at this time?
Uh, yes.
Or you have more information you want to share now?
That's about it. I know it's a lot I threw at you there in a short period of time, so any questions, I'll answer them the best I can.
Questions by the commission?
Real basic question, Mr. Chairman. Given our budget, Terry was what, about a half a million dollars for this?
Yes, yes.
So is there anything that you've seen in the needs list in which we can produce a project that will meet that requirement of 500,000?
I, when I, when I looked at, when I talked to the engineers, honestly, the addition is a simple structure. There's not much to it. The biggest thing was the HVAC by going with the standard furnace system, which is the biggest cost savings of $75,000. I mean, it's apparent that between the last 12 and six months, costs have skyrocketed, whether it's labor and material cost or something. Everybody was a little bit floored at the price that came in, to be honest with you. But because it's somewhat of a simple structure, we are bound to use steel studs, steel beams and columns because of the type of construction out there, the size of the building. We can't convert to wood, which would save money, but it just doesn't meet building code at that point in time.
So the answer is no?
Besides the VE items that we've listed, yes.
Okay. All right.
My opinion.
That's the only question I have at this time. Any other questions? Bottom line, what is the lowest dollar amount at this time, considering some of these reductions?
Sure. Well, as is, Huguen Dorn is the apparent little bidder, 966-900. Keep in mind, there is a contingency number in there of 10% of that that could be removed from the contract.
What was that number again, sir?
966-900.
And you said the contingency was 10%?
Correct. I'll double check that here.
The better question?
Yes. Well, the, the base bid is 879000, and then a 10% contingency is added to that for 87,900.
Did you have that 10% contingency in your initial cost estimate?
Yes. So if we, that gives it a total of 966-900. So the base bid, if we want to remove contingency from the, from the bid as is, it would bring it down to 879. If we took all the VE items, we would be looking at approximately 732500.
And that's reworking the whole HVAC system and the utilities?
Utilities, HVAC, some electrical items, some work around the building where they had to cut concrete out to do the addition, reducing the amount of that. Structurally, I checked with them to see if there's anything that we could do structurally. Really, what they designed is the most economical system there is for the addition currently. Electrical, it's very basic. It's mainly removing dimmable lights. And then the other big ticket item would be removing the second bathroom, cost savings.
Terry, do you have any input on this right now?
At this point, I think we're just looking for direction of what you want to do. Again, like Brad said, up at the opening, shocking to hear these numbers, kind of wondering where they came from, but like I said, we figured we'd kind of come at you and give you all the information about what the next feasible steps are. Hopefully, we can still move forward in some manner with this project. Again, I think, I think legal counsel has, has given, gave an opinion, I think that was emailed out to you guys last week, that if there's going to be wholesale changes, and I'm guessing, I'm guessing these valued engineer changes that Brad is talking about would be considered wholesale changes. His recommendation is to redesign and rebid, so.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, it sounds like it was just the documents weren't, I mean, what we needed them to be, and we need to look at for cost savings, and those, and these bids were so close that I think personally I'm going to be voting to reject the bids.
Yeah. So, so again, you know, this first item I had is just the discussion, you know, about what your thoughts are on this, kind of giving you all the information here, and then the next item is, depending on what you want to do, either award them or reject them, I think my action is to award it as is with the contingency of trying to get, or to have them value engineer and minus out some of these items. But again, I understand, you know, with legal saying that, that this could be, I mean, with that, that many wholesale changes, it probably should be rebid, but.
Keep in mind, too, if we rebid because the bids were so tight, you know, we're still looking at that low $700, $700,000 price tag.
That may be, but these bids are so close that it could change the whole thing, the whole lay of the land, so I think, at least for my part, I'm going to vote to reject them for now. I do want to move forward with the project, but that makes the most sense, at least to me.
I think on my, on my next item, my next item for the awarding of this.
Say, Terry, before, before we go on to the next item, is there any other input by this commission? If not, I'd like to have public input before we go to the second item, okay?
Sure.
The only comment, Mr. Chair, that I would share is that really is a true testament of trying to do the project right the first time because the changes are extremely costly as we are going to be hopefully looking at our numbers for the courthouse very soon that we try to make sure we look at and take this into perspective as we're making decisions on what may or may not need to be changed on that. So I think, Madam Auditor, if you could remind me, I think we built the whole building, what, for $9 million, something like that?
I think close to that.
Yeah. And we're looking at a small addition for a million bucks. It, it's a quicker reality of making sure that you build it when you've got a size enough project to get people to bid it. Economical scale and all that changing is extremely costly, so.
Mr. Chair, did we have any original projections as to what this would cost? Did we have anything like that, Terry?
We did. It was 450,000.
Yeah, it was, it was like 460 or something like that was original when we first started talking about this, so.
Terry, could your budget absorb another $400,000?
So, as I was going to say, and I, in my next item, I do have in there that we had a bridge project that was supposed to go this year as a preservation project, but it cannot because it's not ready to go yet. We can't go to bid on it, so that project will not happen this year. And I had an amount of, I think, close to 400,000 on that one that will not be happening this year, and that's going to be pushed to 25 now, so. So the funds would be available if we just shifted them over, but.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead. Public input on the matter.
Montgomery, South Dakota. Over the last three years, my taxes have gone up 130%, and I'm just having a hard time understanding why we need this. There's, apparently, they're, they're operating just fine without this office. We're going to spend a minimum $54 million on a new courthouse, and I don't know why that office couldn't be incorporated in either the new building or the old building, but for us to spend somewhere close to a million dollars for an office, that, how is that going to serve me as a taxpayer? I mean, is it going to, are things going to vacillate? Are we going to save a million dollars for the county? I don't think so. So I would strongly suggest you turn this down and, and, you know, somewhere we got to start pinching pennies here. If we're just going to keep raising everybody's taxes to, so we can have a new office for every once in a while, I mean, this, this is crazy. It's, I don't know if you noticed the headline of the Sioux Valley News here in the last couple of months, but one of them said, "You're taxing me out of my home," and I think we better be taking a good heart look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? Terry, did you have any other items to mention on number two?
So, so number two is board action to award the Highway Shop Office Edition bid. And again, that would be awarding it to Huguen Dorn at 966-900 for the base bid and $50,000 for the alternate contingent on contractor working with the architect in Lincoln County to find meaningful construction cost savings through value engineering the project. And again, that's, that's what I had on here. Again, this was done last Thursday. A lot of other information as far as these value engineering costs, we didn't have a list of them until probably yesterday was when those came out, so those weren't available for, to put on here. So I guess it's up to you. That's what I have is board action, so.
Okay. Any other input by this commission? Any public input on item number two? I know one and two kind of tie together. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion to reject all bids.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Poppins, a second by Mr. Aaron's to reject all bids. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I want to thank Terry for the work you did on this. Appreciate it as well as for looking into your budget. Want to thank the architects for going back and taking a second look at this as well. Appreciate those efforts. I, I think people, yeah, were probably shocked by the, the dollar amount, and that's obviously no fault of the architects or of the highway department, of course. I think that's just a sign and symptom of where things are at in the economy today, like was said earlier. It's just an unfortunate reality, obviously, for these kinds of projects, so. But I do appreciate the work everybody did.
And I, I would like to see this back on the agenda for, to put out for new bids that are the, the changes that were discussed earlier.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay. Kristin, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes. Motion carried.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, item number three, as far as board action to approve fireworks for a public display permit. The applicant is Mark Foster. Is he here by chance?
Mr. Chairman, normally Harold just brings this up when he's here. He just, like last year and the year before, he normally brings it up himself.
I know. I wonder if this shouldn't have been removed, but maybe there's some timeliness to it. Should we table it until Harold's back?
Yeah, do you know, Terry's coming up. Well, let's see what.
I did have a conversation with Harold, and, and the other item we suggested removal, so he can explain that further. This item, he said he would recommend approval, and that's, that's basically the comments that he had regarding this item.
Okay. His recommendation was approval, okay. Is there any other public input on this matter?
We've done this before.
Okay.
We've done it before, you said. I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Poppins, second by Schmidt to approve. Any discussion? Okay. Kristin, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes. Okay. Item number five. Is Toby here?
She'll just read it.
Okay. Kristin, will you read that, please?
First reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning tract one, Qualix addition, northwest one quarter section, 32T100NR50WEST, De La Pre Township from the A1 agricultural district to the I1 light industrial district, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission, commissioners recommended approval failed zero to six.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
This is just a first reading.
No process with first reading.
Just first reading.
All right. Good enough.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll offer a motion to go in executive session.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Poppins and a second by Aaron's to go in executive session. Any discussion?
May I?
Okay. Yes.
I think when you guys redid public comment, you said that you were going to do public comment if you were going to go into executive session so that they could leave if they needed to rather than do an executive session and then public comment.
Thank you for those comments.
Commissioner, would you withdraw your motion? I'll withdraw for that request for public.
Withdraw the second.
Okay. With that being said, we'll go ahead and, and move on then to opportunity for public comment.
Hello. My name is Linda Montgomery from February, South Dakota. I am here again today to talk to you about my two favorite subjects, and one is the CVRs and the other is the audit logs. Again, I repeat what they are for. They are used to audit the election for ease of the auditors, the officials, the public, so that they can have confidence in that tabulator and in their election results. Now, I know there's a lot of discussion about, I believe that the tabulators are 100% correct. The only way to make sure that that is a true statement is by the CVRs and the audit logs or a full audit of the hand count and compared to the machine. Now, my fear right now is that the Secretary of State has talked to ESNFs about turning off the cast vote records, which would deny us the right to audit the election, whether to prove it right or to prove it wrong. Now, what I want, and I just found out the other day, that our auditor is able by herself to look to see if the CVRs are on or off. I haven't been able to talk to her yet about that, but I want a public session at the next meeting of this commission to discuss that in Lincoln County, I need, we need the CVRs to be turned on and the audit logs to be turned on so we can make sure that our tabulators are correct and our election is correct. Our people, my people in my precinct, your people in your, your districts, want to know that we truly are running a free, fair, and most of all, transparent election. This is the most basic freedom we have, and I believe it is important enough to put it on the next agenda. And I would like one of you, two of you, or all of you to realize how important this is and to please put it on the next agenda. And I will bring experts, I will, you know, it's actually, it is here. Federal government has already stated why we need the CVRs and the audit logs. What are they used for? To be able to audit the election and to provide the citizens and you and the auditors and all officials a perfect audit log of what happened in that election. I respectfully request a public session, a, yeah, public session for next time regarding this, and I want Lincoln County to have affidavits signed before that election that the CVR and the audit logs are turned on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, I guess I'll move on to any commissioner reports.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I'll give you a motion to go in the executive session.
Okay. We have a motion to go in executive session.
Second.
Motion by Poppins, second by Aaron's. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Executive session.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Poppins, a second by Commissioner Landine.
Aaron's, it was.
Aaron's, okay. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes. That brings us on then to agenda item number six.
Good morning. Sheri Long, Lincoln County Auditor. I've got in front of you applications for abatement of taxes from the Lennox Area Development Corp. It is for taxes 23 payable and 24 on the number of parcels and the number of amounts. On this, on this request, we are asking that you deny it based on they did not apply for the exemption status in a timely manner.
Okay. Any questions for our auditor? Public input? With that being said, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve.
A second.
A motion by Poppins, second by Commissioner Landine. Any discussion? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
No.
Commissioner Landine.
No.
Commissioner Poppins.
No.
Commissioner Schmidt.
No.
Commissioner Gibbon.
No. Moving on then to item number seven.
Okay. Item number seven is another application for refund of taxes. These are for taxes that were paid from 2020 till 2024 on a parcel in the city of Lennox for a total refund of $11,824.30. This, with your approval, then, we'll send it next to the city of Lennox for their concurrence.
Move to approve.
A second.
Okay. A motion by Aaron's, second by Landine to approve. Any public input? If not, any discussion? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. I guess, any commissioners, anything to report?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman. I've had some ongoing conversations with South Dakota Game, Fish and Parks. And I'm happy to report that on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, they'd like to come here and make a presentation to us about their efforts that are going on at Lake Elvin in order to dredge the, dredge the lake and make some improvements there. So I'm going to be putting that on the Commission agenda. They're going to be coming with a PowerPoint just to give us an update on what's going on. And then they'll be, they, they are going to both bring their administrative people and their engineers to be able to answer any questions that we may have. Because invariably, there may be questions about how Nine Mile Creek and the watershed play into this process. Although their presentation will be primarily just aimed at the Lake Elvin issue for right now. And then later on that evening, they're going to be doing a public open house at Good Earth State Park to inform and educate the public about what's going on out there as well. So just wanted to give you a preview of that and let the fellow Commissioners know that's going to be going on. And, and that'll be on the Tuesday, June twenty-fifth meeting. They'll be here.
All right. Thank you. Any other Commissioner have a report? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's all moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Landine, seconded by Arns. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Arns.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. We are adjourned.